Plan, the commission is required to hold at least ten public hearings throughout the state of Michigan. The purpose for these hearings is to inform the public about the redistricting process, to share the purpose and responsibilities of the commission, and to solicit information from the public about potential redistricting plans that we have. What we are looking for are comments from citizens, and that is the reason why I am here tonight, to request that you inform members of your community about our commission, that you encourage them, to the extent you are able to, please contact us, share comments with us if they can attend a public hearing, attend a public hearing, but otherwise advise us of any thoughts or concerns they have about the redistricting process or any particular areas where they think lines should be drawn or maybe where they think lines shouldn't be drawn. That's the kind of information that we're looking for. So I've posted this information here. If you would like me to share this presentation with you, I can, so that you can make it available to your citizens. But really what we're looking for at this point is just public commentary, so to guide us and assist us in drawing these maps. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Marsh, can this be put on to our website? It's not?
Yes, it can.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you Rebecca for taking the time to come and speak to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now we're going to go back to public comments. Want to put up your hand, make some kind of motion? I see Martha Covert just put up her hand, so Martha, the floor is yours.
I just want to thank Mayor Graffstein, Protown Mayor, Mr. Soltes, and Councilman Bob Corbett for attending either the visitation and/or the funeral of Captain, excuse me, Brozich. I think it meant a lot for the family to see some support from our council, that just, there's nothing else that can outweigh that. Lindsay did get a call from our governor, which, I don't care what your political stance is, that was amazing for her to do this. A little guy in Florida named Zach did a mile run, honor run, with the fireman's flag, which the family is now making sure gets to Lindsay. I just think that what you people did to show her the appreciation of this community was outstanding, and I appreciate it. Lindsay is a fighter, Lindsay is a warrior. This trauma, she will come out like a phoenix from ashes and protect and serve everyone in the city, protect and serve every business in the city, because that's what she promised to do when she pinned down that badge. I just wanted you guys to know that people noticed that you took the time to do this for her and for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Covert. Anyone else in public comment? Anyone help? Kevin Wright, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Graffstein and City Council. I just come tonight just to let you and our neighbors know that a group that my wife and I co-founded Madison Heights Citizens United is raising money for the city to hold its first annual, or its first inaugural Juneteenth celebration this year. We're holding a fundraiser by selling celebrate, or selling a celebrate Juneteenth t-shirts. I'm gonna stand up because I just amazingly coincidentally happen to have one on tonight. So we're, uh, you can see that we're selling celebrate Juneteenth t-shirts, glad to be your neighbor lawn signs. We're also accepting cash donations of any amount to go towards the Juneteenth celebrations. The t-shirts that I just showed you, they're available to adult and youth sizes, and they come in five different colors in both categories. The best thing about it is all the net proceeds from this fundraiser will be donated directly to the city's Human Relations and Equity Commission for the planning and staging of the Juneteenth event. So just want you and our neighbors know that if anyone wants to donate or to get more information about the fundraiser, they can go to Madison Heights Citizens United Group Facebook page. Again, that's Madison Heights Citizens United. We're on Facebook, and it has information about not only our group, but about the fundraiser and the money we're raising for the Juneteenth festival. So thank you very much for your time. I just want to let you and our neighbors know about this.
Thank you. Simone Moi, you are next. You want to win you?
Good evening. Just following up after Kevin, but I first like to start with saying I enjoyed the State of the City address last week and was excited to see that the focus was on the positivity of and things that are happening around the city, including our Juneteenth celebration that is coming up this summer. I know the HREC, we are really excited to see the increased momentum and visibility. And so we are having our first volunteer meeting tomorrow. The virtual information is on the HREC Facebook page, so we're hoping that anyone who wants to get involved can reach out or join us tomorrow. We also have, let me see. I'm trying to think of what else I was wanting to say. Oh, we're also looking for corporate sponsorships too, so if, you know, we could spread the word about that. I know the mayor mentioned earlier that they were trying to do a collective, something collective for the entire city and all the events, but if there's any interest or any word that we can get, because like Kevin said, we are trying to raise funds so that we do not have this event be a burden on the city. So anyone interested in joining our virtual volunteers meeting, that will be tomorrow. Again, the information is on the HREC Facebook page, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wants to? I am not seeing anyone, so I am going to close public comment at this time and move down to reports. Item D, the one from the city manager, the interlocal agreement between Madison Heights and Oakland County for legal education for MIDC. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, per the approved compliance plan approved by City Council and the Michigan Individual Defense Commission, or the MIDC, and the 43rd District Court, we have negotiated with Oakland County to provide continuing legal education for court-appointed criminal defense attorneys. This agreement was initially approved in September of 2019, and since that time Oakland County has been fulfilling the necessary administrative and organizational requirements needed to ensure full compliance with the MIDC's mandated standards for continuing education per participating attorney, and any fees charged for education are included in the grant reimbursement from the MIDC. The agreement council is being asked to consider extends the 2019 agreement and will remain in effect until terminated by either party.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Corbett?
Yeah, I moved that the council approve extension of the 2019 agreement, the interlocal agreement between the city of Madison Heights and Oakland County for legal education for the MIDC. The agreement will remain in effect until terminated by the city or the county.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilor Orbach?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I think I lost Mark and Kim.
Okay.
Hold a minute, maybe there's an internet problem.
Oh, okay.
We lost a couple of participants as well as Kim and Mark, so.
I thought people just left. Okay, yes, I see.
Here comes Kim. Yeah, I see. Back in here is Mark.
Okay.
Okay.
Hold on, is, where's Mr. Geddings?
Let me hear, my internet went out. I don't know if everyone's having that problem.
Yeah, no, the, yeah, you and Mr. Bliss. Can you tell us when you left? That was the last thing you heard, so we know.
Melissa just started talking.
Okay.
Started talking.
I'm not really sure the proper protocol. We've just had a motion made and seconded. Yeah, Mr. Bliss, are you back?
I just let him in the room, but yes.
Okay.
I'm on my desk right now.
Your Honor, may I suggest that the clerk, you ask the clerk to read the motion and back, so we're all back to speed.
Is Mr. Geddings on?
No, there's no sign.
I don't see Mr. Geddings.
Mine cut off also right as she started reading the report. I don't know how far you want to back up.
Do you want me to reread the motion?
Hang on one second. It was just in the way.
Mr. Geddings is coming on now, all right. Okay. All right, we'll give, how about we give Mr. Geddings a second to come back on, and then if the clerk can read the report, does that, does that make the most sense? Mr. Geddings, are you back with us now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, there is an internet issue. All right, clerk, if you could just do a quick recap, please. Do you want me to read the motion? Or do you want, Melissa, do you want to read the report and I'll read the motion?
Read the report again, so we're all on the same page, because we had some residents that dropped off as well. I think they're back too. So per the approved compliance plan approved by City Council and the Michigan Individual Defense Commission, also known as the MIDC, and the 43rd District Court, we've negotiated with Oakland County to provide continuing legal education for our court-appointed criminal defense attorneys. This agreement was initially approved in September of 2019. Since that time Oakland County has been fulfilling the necessary administrative and organizational requirements needed to ensure full compliance with the MIDC's mandated standards for continuing education per participating attorney, and any fees charged for education are included in the grant reimbursement from the MIDC. The agreement council is being asked to consider extends the 2019 agreement and will remain in effect until terminated by either party.
And then I have motion by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Orbach, to approve the extension of the interlocal agreement between the city of Madison Heights and Oakland County for legal education for the MIDC, Michigan Individual Defense Commission.
Is there any discussion from council? All right, Mr. Sherman?
I think the motion also included, Councilman Corbett's motion also included that it extends the time until terminated by either party, and I would ask the maker of the motion and support to also include that it authorizes the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
I would be happy to, sir.
As will I.
Thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Did you say authorized by the city manager? City manager. All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Is there any discussion from council? All right, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Yes, Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Orbach?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein? Vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up, item D two from the city manager, the 43rd District Court magistrate appointment. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
In January 2021, long-serving Madison Heights magistrate Kim Wilson announced her retirement effective the end of April. Michael Mitchell has been chosen to replace magistrate Wilson. Mr. Mitchell has recently met the requirements to be sworn in as a magistrate in the 43rd District Court. The approval process requires that all the funding units of the 43rd District Court approve this appointment. This appointment will not increase the cost in any way to the funding unit as Mr. Mitchell is simply replacing magistrate Wilson, and the number of hours and pay rate will remain the same. This appointment is approved by Judge Hunt and also Judge Longo, who is the chief judge, and Chief Longo is recommending that city council approve Michael Mitchell.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilor Orbach?
I move that council approves the appointment of Michael Mitchell to the magistrate of the 43rd District Court.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilor Orbach?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein? Vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up, D three from the DPS director, the 2021 Summer Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission of Oakland County. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
As provided for council's consideration is the 2021 Summer Maintenance Agreement from the Road Commission of Oakland County for 14-mile, 12-mile, and John R. from 14 to the Red Run County Drain. Under this agreement, the city provides street sweeping, weed trimming, and grass mowing litter pickup along these county roads. This contract maintains the pricing from 2020, which reflected a 7.9% increase attributable to increased in prices for all three services. The 2021 rate reflects the current bid prices solicited by RCOC. Staff and I recommend that city council approve this agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. The RCOC is requesting that the city invoice the Road Commission 65% of the total contract in September and 35 upon completion.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Bliss?
I move that we approve the Summer Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilman Geddings?
I support the motion.
Great, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Just a question for Ms. Marsh, if I could. The part about the billing in separate two-thirds and one-third amount, I don't, has that always been the case? It's just a passing point of interest. It has?
Your Honor, it has.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Mayor Potem Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Orbach?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein? Vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up, D four from the CED Supervisor, the interlocal agreement with Oakland County for the Restaurant Relief Program. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Does Oakland County, Oakland municipalities, the Restaurant Relief Program to help improve the economic opportunities of bars and restaurants negatively impacted by COVID-19. This grant provided funding to assist businesses with purchasing items or reimbursing them for products and improvements that they made to adapt their operations to a deal with the pandemic. Madison Huts businesses have been awarded a total of $80,064. Staff and I recommend that city council approve this interlocal agreement with Oakland County and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city, which will allow the release of the funds.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I move that we approve this interlocal agreement with Oakland County and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city, allowing the release of these funds.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Great, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Orbach?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltes?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein? Vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have item D five, the Grant Agreement Between Eagle and Madison Heights. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor? I move that the council approve the agreement between Eagle and the city of Madison Heights.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilor Orbach?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Orbach?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein? Vote yes, motion carries, thank you. And last report, D six, the Interlocal Funding Agreement between Oakland County and Madison Heights. Let's solicit council.
Your Honor?
Councilman Corbett?
I move that the council approve the interlocal agreement between Oakland County and the city of Madison Heights.
Great, thank you. There's support?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Great, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Orbach?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein? I vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up, F Bid and Awards and Purchases, F one from the DPS director, the 2021 Water Main Replacement Program Pipe and Parts. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, in February 2021, the city received two sealed bids for the Water Main Replacement Program. The bids were opened and tabulated, and the completion of the bid analysis, after we verified the prices and products, Core and Main submitted the lowest overall bid for a total estimated project cost of $283,973. Core and Main, formerly known as H&amp;D Supply, is our current supplier for water main repair parts and has also been the low bid for many of our water main replacement projects over the years. DPS has had a longstanding and satisfactory business relationship with Core and Main, and we expect this to continue in years to come. Staff and I recommend that council award the bid for the 2021 Water Main Replacement Pipe and Parts to the lowest responsible bidder, Core and Main of Shelby Township, Michigan, for the unit prices specified. This represents a total estimated project cost of $283,973, and funds are budgeted and available for this purchase. Staff also requests that council's motion include extending this bid to the upcoming proposed standalone water main projects at the unit prices identified, subject to fiscal year 2022 budget approval.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I was just wondering if we read that as, is two motions for approval, or if we include it all in one?
You can put it in one.
We can do it in one.
Your Honor, Councilwoman Clark was starting to fade out before she faded out. Could be another issue.
Mr. Bliss, you're still with us? Mr. Geddings, you're still with us?
Nope.
No, Mr. Bliss is coming back too. All right, we're going to pause this for two minutes. We just wait for everyone. Mr. Geddings, you're still with us? Uh, no, okay.
He looks frozen.
Councilor Orbach, I see you moving. Soltes, I see you moving. Mr. Corbett, I see you moving. Okay, wonderful, all right.
You must be in the right spot.
Yeah, I think.
I wonder if everybody has the same internet provider that keeps going out.
I don't know, but.
No, it's actually good clean living, Your Honor, but.
All right. Well, we'll just, we'll just wait for a minute for everyone to come back and. Councilwoman Clark, you're back. Not, not just you, give it a minute, because we lost Mr. Bliss and Mr. Geddings as well.
We must all have, wow.
Yeah, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get joined back now on my phone, and it's saying that I'm unable to rejoin because I was removed by the host. So more for, oh, we forgot to tell you. But I am on audio.
Okay, can you let him in? Mr. Geddings is trying to get.
Mr. Geddings is coming back now.
If we could get Councilman Bliss back in, that would be great. If not, we'll just have him on audio, but would he be invited back in?
I think I did.
He's in. I just can't, his video is turned off.
Mr. Bliss, you back in?
Yeah, I'm on, on my phone. I'm not able to join on my laptop right now. It's saying that I was removed by the host. It's okay, we can get, we can get to you. I can do it on my.
Okay, I believe Councilwoman Clark, you were in the middle of making a motion. You want to continue, you asked a question, and the question, the answer is yes. It can be one motion, so if you would like to continue.
I'm gonna let Emily make the motion. I just want, that was the question that I wondered, is if it had to be one or two.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilor Orbach?
Your Honor, excuse me for interrupting, Your Honor.
Mr. Sherman?
If that's the case, Councilwoman Clark needs to withdraw her motion that was on the floor.
I never made a motion, I just made a question.
Was there a motion, clerk?
No, there was no motion. She just asked a question.
My apologies.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, Councilor Orbach, did you want to make that motion?
I mean, I can try, so. Let's go for this. So I, I move that council awards the bid for the 2021 Water Main Replacement Pipe and Parts to the lowest responsible bidder, Core and Main of Shelby Township, for the unit prices specified. A total project cost estimated at $283,973.37. Funds are budgeted and available for this purchase, and I move that, I include in this motion that we extend the bid to the upcoming proposed standalone non-R3 water main project at the unit prices identified, subject to fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget approval.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Graffstein?
Mr. Geddings?
I'll support the motion.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Soltes?
Yeah, I had a question if the DPS director is around. So there was two bids, is that correct?
Yeah.
And so how low was the, was the second, the bid?
In comparison, it was, it was relatively close, but Core and Main was, was the lower bid. The, the issue that we're seeing right now is the, the cost of the C900 pipe is increased. It's actually gone up essentially $2.36 per foot, which is a significant cost increase. So that's where a large part of the difference is in the bids.
So just for the folks at home, when it says here that there was a completion of a bid analysis, including verification of pricing and product bid, Core and Main submitted the lowest. Is that, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, so, so in order for us to do, perform our bid analysis, we, we have to make sure that the units are matching. So sometimes a contractor will bid per each So sometimes a contractor will bid, uh, per each as opposed to bidding per lineal foot on different, um, different bid items in or, in order for, uh, for us to do that measure, compare them both, we have to perform that analysis, if that makes sense.
And then the quality of the product is the same or different?
The same, exact same. We spec, we spec the same materials for the, for the job. If there's anything different than one we typically use for our water main projects, then they have to submit a, uh, an alternative request. And, uh, but it, with Core and Main and Ferguson, we both, last year we used, uh, Ferguson, uh, as our supplier. They were a little bitter last year, uh, but prior to that, it's always been either Core and Main or, uh, yeah, what was the name of, uh, of HD Supply before they changed their name to Core and Main? So we've got a long history, uh, with Core and Main, and, and we've had a very good working relationship with them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, comments by council? All right, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Gennings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Greystein?
Oh, yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, uh, F2, purchasing coordinator, community development block grant, the CDVG funded yard service, lawn service. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, and according with HUD regulations, the city posted a bid for the CDVG fund lot, funded lawn services. This bid was emailed to 185 vendors with seven bids being received. The lowest qualified bidder is Zimmerman Lawn and Snow at $19 per lot. Madison Heights has used Zimmerman for the CDVG lawn services off and on since 2003. They have been our contractor for the service each year since 2018. City staff and residents alike have always found Zimmerman professional and easy to work with, and they provide excellent services. Staff and I would respectfully request that council award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, Zimmerman Lawn and Snow, for a one-year contract at a unit rate of $19 per lot for the 2021 mowing season. We would also respectfully request that council authorize the city to proceed to the next lowest bidder, Christopher's Complete Maintenance Doing Business as JC Outdoor, at the unit price of $20 per lot, in the event the contract with Zimmerman is canceled due to non-performance or other issues.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Support it?
Move that the council approve the recommendation of staff to award the lawn cutting service for 2021 to Zimmerman Lawn and Snow for a unit price of $19 per lawn. Um, and I would specifically, uh, authorize the, uh, staff to go to the next low bidder, JC Outdoors, in the event of, uh, failure of the first applicant to, uh, perform. And, and I would authorize the mayor and, uh, clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gennings?
Yes.
Mayor Greystein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you, and welcome back, Mr. Bliss. All right, uh, next up, we have the approval for the minutes from the regular city council meeting of February 22nd. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilor Rorback?
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting on February 22nd of 2021 as submitted.
Thank you. Support?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gennings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Greystein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the regular business for our city council meeting, so I now invite closing comments from our council members, starting with Councilman Corbett.
Just, uh, one item this evening, Your Honor. Uh, just wanted to acknowledge publicly the passing of, uh, Captain Bozick, I think I pronounced that properly. Um, he, a young fellow, 58, uh, he died really in the, uh, the prime of his life. He's really on the top of his game, and, and to have this happen, it's just a tragedy for his wife, for his children, for his family as a whole and the community. Um, hardworking fella, uh, was a was a compliment to his profession and to his community, and he will be deeply missed. Our thoughts and best wishes are with his widow, who also is a, um, a first responder, and, uh, just so she and the family know that we will be, uh, pulling for them and, and hoping the best. That's all this evening, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Uh, Mr. Bliss?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. I, I will apologize again. I'm, I'm stuck on my phone right now. But, uh, just a couple of things. I'd like to first echo the sentiments of Councilman Corbett, uh, about, uh, Fire Captain Brosic. Uh, and I am, uh, so thankful that members of our council were, were able to attend that funeral. I was ill over the weekend, uh, but I'm, I'm so thrilled that that, that level of respect was made evident, uh, that our thoughts and prayers are, are with, uh, the, the family right now, and all of the friends, and all of our firefighters and first responders. Um, this is a trying time, and, you know, all the way up to the governor's office, I'm glad that it's been recognized. Uh, second thing tonight, I'd like us to make sure that we've got some, some consistency on, uh, video and presentations. Uh, previously, I believe we have said that any, any resident or anybody wanting to share something, it had to be an agenda item, uh, because we didn't want anything like a video or a presentation being shown, uh, or under open comments. And so just in the future, uh, and the, the MICRC thing, I'm sure we would have added it to the agenda had we been, uh, following that protocol, but, but, you know, I just want a determination from the city's attorney, uh, city attorney's office, one way or the other. Uh, should we allow it under open count, open comments as designated by the chair of the meeting? Uh, or is this something that we want to just have as a blanket rule where it has to go into an agenda item if there's a presentation? Uh, I'm sure either would be fine. Finally, I have a couple of things on the, the boards and commissions. Uh, I'd like us to do another round of the, uh, Quality of Life Grant Program. Um, we may not have any cash available through budget savings, but I think what we saw with the CDVG funds is that it's really critical to have that wish list on file. And so hearing from the Quality of Life boards, understanding where their priorities lie, uh, as we do uncover budget savings, making sure that we know where they can go, that every dollar has a place, and that we know the value of those investments. Uh, if we're trying to save money, maybe on a big contract, like, you know, the, what we discussed today. You know, if we are going with a lower bidder, if we are trying to cut, uh, cut some budget, understanding what the benefit of that is, we're making that decision, understanding what the cost is if we go a different direction, I think is really important. So I'd love to see us, uh, open that up again to our boards and commissions without any uh, dollar value attached for it, simply asking maybe for their top three, and seeing what we get back and understanding those needs from our boards on the council level. Second, I think it's also time, you know, for our boards and commissions to discuss again, uh, you know, the reviewing their founding resolutions and the board makeup, uh, just to make sure that everything is, is, is good. I, I just like hearing from the boards every, you know, two to three years, uh, on that subject, seeing if there's anything that, uh, is either missing or anything that we'd like to edit or amend. Uh, we did it a couple of years ago. I'd just love to see us do that again. Uh, and frankly, that's a really good conversation to tie in with the, uh, potential grant program discussion, because they're prioritizing the things that they would like us to be able to budget and, and invest in, at the same time of talking about, uh, you know, who they are as a board and in what their makeup should be, and, you know, all that stuff. So I'd love to be able to see those two things going to our boards. And, and finally, speaking of boards, uh, the Trail Tunes musician applications are due by the end of the day on the 19th. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, if there's any Madison Heights residents watching this who either are a musician or no one, uh, that time is running out to be able to perform at the festival. Uh, we've already had dozens of submissions from really phenomenal musicians, so if you want your shot at being able to play at the festival, uh, definitely submit as soon as you can. Don't wait until the last minute and then accidentally miss it. Uh, get that in right away. Uh, that's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Councilor Rorback?
All right. Um, I want to take just a few minutes today to, uh, mention some of the work that's been going on with the HREC. Um, just a phenomenal group of individuals that, um, have come together on that board and, um, some, and really important conversations that are happening. I want to mention that the, this board has, since their inception, created a strategic plan. That includes basically four legs of work that we're, that we're working to address. Accessibility, community engagement, cultural events, and policy. Those are four subcommittees that kind of have been formed, and that each one of those committees is looking for different ways that, uh, we can address, um, human relations and equity in this city, um, with those four, you know, chair legs, stool legs, however you want to call it, those four pillars that we're going to be working on. The, the amazing work that Simone Moi and, um, Kevin Wright have been doing, um, and his, his wife Kayla, towards, um, the development and planning of the Juneteenth Celebration. That's June 19th of this year for our not, our, our inaugural, um, Juneteenth Celebration. It is going to be fantastic. I'm really excited about it. Kevin came and showed us his awesome t-shirt, so I want to remind everybody that, um, that Madison Heights Citizens United is a separate, um, nonprofit group that is helping to raise funds for this event. So, um, please get out there, purchase a shirt, um, purchase a lawn sign, make a donation, help us, help us fund this special event, because it's, it's an important one that, um, is, is historically and currently significant event that, um, that Madison Heights is going to be able to, to have and to host and to, um, to invite others in our, in this community and in our surrounding communities to attend and to participate in. There are donation methods available. Um, go to the Facebook page, Madison Heights Citizens United. There's a bunch of different ways. You can send PayPal, you can write a check, however works best for you. We can, we can, uh, they can take your money and towards that donation, so please, um, do that. Yeah, when I talk to our members of, uh, I talked to several members in the last few days of the HREC, and, um, you know, we are, everybody in this group is looking for ways to, uh, make sure that the city is addressing some of the systemic issues that may be affecting our individuals and communities in this city. And so we're looking at, uh, creating an annual calendar of proclamations that, uh, look at not just, you know, we, we, well, one thing that we're trying to very, be very careful about on this board is to not just, just kind of keep jumping at, oh, oh, there's a thing coming. We should take care of that. We should address this, you know? We want it to be, we want it to be done right, and we want it to be done thoughtfully and to be executed thoughtfully. And so, um, the, the group is coming together with a, uh, calendar of proclamations that we want to submit to council for consideration. And so that is, again, it's, it's not a, um, an event that's going to take place like that, and it's going to all be there all of a sudden. It's, we're looking at it thoughtfully and, um, putting together something that is comprehensive. And finally, there's, there's one of the things that we're working on in this, um, the community engagement and, and policy portion of the work that we're doing is, uh, looking at crime statistics and trying to understand how, how we can, um, how those statistics, what they mean, you know, in our community, and who, who is being affected by crime? And who is, were the victims? And how can we help these victims and also address the, the root causes behind what causes some of these crimes? And how can we address that and help people prevent and, um, recover or survive when they, when they are victims of crime? So these are all really important things that the, um, HREC is focused on and working towards. I'm really proud of this group of people because, um, some really thoughtful, um, conversations that are, are important that we want to have going forward and have had and will continue to have. So I welcome anybody from council who has a question about what's going on or any, any things that are, um, you know, as, as things come, we'll bring them to council to consider, but please, um, anybody in the community or on council that has questions, please come talk to me. Come talk to, um, Councilwoman Clark or any member of, of, uh, the HREC, because I know every single one of us would be thrilled to talk to you about it. Um, and then finally, I want to mention, um, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, it, um, is doing some amazing things. A subcommittee of that board is working towards, uh, some pretty exciting things that they're going to bring to the, uh, to the full advisory board in, um, the next one, I think our next meeting's on the 25th. So, um, they're bringing that forward then, um, so look forward to some really cool things coming from them. The ECC, the Environmental Citizens Committee, um, you know, the, the tree plantings and the, uh, Kaboom Grant, and there's so many amazing things coming out of that. I'm just thrilled to be part of each one of these committees. Um, and then I want to remind everybody that the Arts Board is having a fundraiser as well. Uh, Shake, what do they call it? I forget. The, the Shake Shop fundraiser. Um, they, uh, there's New Heights Nutrition on John R. Road is, um, hosting a fundraiser for the Arts Board. So pop in there on this coming Saturday from nine to five. Get a, get a shake, get a tea. They're really good. They're really good, and they're super healthy. So grab one. Um, and, um, part of the proceeds from that will help, uh, fund programs that are, uh, developed by the Arts Board. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Rorback. Uh, Mr. Sherman, anything from the attorney's office?
Uh, just a couple of things, Your Honor. On behalf of council, of course, our hearts go out to the families of Fire Captain Jeffrey Brosich and also our longtime building inspector, Ken Gar, who recently passed away within the last few days. I would ask council, of course, to, at an appropriate time, to issue condolence resolutions, uh, to both families. With regard to, um, our outgoing magistrate, Kim Wilson, she has served the, the city in the 43rd District Court with distinction over an extended period of time, at least 20 years, maybe longer, and I would ask the council to consider a certificate of appreciation to be presented after she retires in the end of April. That's it, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Marsh, anything from the city manager? Anything?
Just one thing. Uh, I want to echo the comments of the city council earlier, just to say that our whole city is grieving the loss of Fire Captain Jeff Brosich, and I want to thank the community for how they came together to support his family, our fire department, our police department, and just our city as a whole. Um, they do have a GoFundMe account set up to support his, uh, 16-year-old daughter. Um, so if anybody feels the need to donate to that, you can find that on the Madison Heights Fire Department page. It's also widely shared on Facebook, so that is it.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Rotman, anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gennings?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, condolences go out to the captain and his family. Uh, sorry to hear about his loss, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, also want to share my condolences to the families who experienced loss this past couple of weeks. Um, uh, tonight, I just want to shine a bright, shiny light on one of our residents, Sayad Mertaza, and if I'm, uh, pronouncing your last name wrong, I apologize, but Sayad is doing something incredible here in our city, um, to follow up with the amazing work that the Food Pantry is doing, the, the Women's Club, um, gathering coats and everything for everyone. Sayad has put together Madison Heights Mutual Aid. Um, this is a page that you can find on Facebook, and you can participate in the conversation. And on this page, you will find a link to a spreadsheet that is starting off as, as his first run of technology to help organize the needs of our residents and help them find the right resources to meet their needs. Um, I encourage everyone to join it, uh, whether you can give or whether it is something that you, that you need to take from it. It's an incredible resource. Um, on this spreadsheet, you'll be able to see what offers there are out there. People who want to, um, lend their services or their skill sets. There is, um, areas for childcare, food, ideas if they're not already on there. Um, and then you can also list a request, and what Sayad looks to do is help, uh, connect neighbors with each other and ways that they can be helpful to each other, and also collect money so that we can give that to neighbors in need, um, no questions asked as well. So if you, um, have something that you can contribute to this, or if you need something to take away from this effort, I encourage you to go on Facebook and look for the Madison Heights Mutual Aid. And I also encourage you to meet Sayad and his partner. They're an amazing couple. I had a chance to meet them in person this weekend, and I actually communicate with Sayad all the time. So get out there and meet your neighbors who are doing great things to help bridge these disparity gaps. It's an inspirational thing to behold.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Potem Soltis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my heart too goes out to the family of the fallen first responder, Fire Captain Brozich. I, I was so amazed, uh, when I was there, um, how many fellow first responders and law enforcement family, friends, uh, gather there, uh, for their support. It was amazing. It was absolutely amazing, uh, and he'll be greatly missed. I also want to talk about our law enforcement, and, uh, recently, we just had a And recently, we just had a armed robbery in Go Wireless Cell Phone Store. That was on March fourth. It was an armed robbery. Both robbers had, had weapons. They wore masks. They had, like I said, handguns. They demanded cell phones and everything else. And then they took off running in their car. So the police, of course, jumped right on it and they were trailing the suspect. I guess they were going south on a Stevenson. They tried to stop. The police tried to get them to stop. They didn't. And so now there's a pursuit, which is that in itself is a huge endangerment with just the public. I guess eventually the vehicle became disabled and the officers were able to apprehend them. And so that it, it ended in well, but, you know, we've had other incidences where there's armed robbery where somebody was trying to shoot at somebody in a parking lot. And so to me, that's why we have our officers, right? And they're trained and, and they do a fantastic job protecting our city and every resident in our city. And that's why we can't talk about defunding the police. We, a strong law enforcement in Madison Heights is a, it's always been that way and we, it needs to continue because that's how you keep the crime rate low like we have it and provide our residents the safety that they deserve. So I applaud the police officers. They put on their bulletproof vests every day, not knowing what they're going to get themselves into. I did Rylongs and some were pretty, pretty nerve-wracking. And so, you know, to imagine them doing it day in and day out. They need our support. They need the community support, council support like we do. And I, and I just, I just applaud them and I, and I think that we can continue to provide more law enforcement and, and, you know, trying to prevent these crimes from happening. But it's, you know, in this day and age, it's there. So I'm glad we have our police department in place and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. I appreciate that. So I want to thank Anna and Adam and everybody else who helped work on the state of the city. If you missed it, it was Thursday morning, but it is available on YouTube on the city website. Also want to invite everybody tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, the DDA Subcommittee Promotions is meeting via Zoom. You do not have to be a DDA member to attend. We are welcoming ideas from the public on how we can promote both the existing businesses that we have in the DDA as well as bringing in new businesses. So if you frequent a business from outside the city that you think would be a good fit in the DDA, you know, reach out. Let's see what we can do to help. And if you can make it tomorrow morning at eight, we would love to see you there. I also want to take a minute to talk about multiple sclerosis. This tie was given to us last year when we had our last in-person meeting and Vida Palavolo came and we had a speaker talk a little bit about multiple sclerosis because this is Awareness Month. And no one reached out to me or anyone on council that I'm aware of. So I just want to take a minute just to sort of share a couple of statistics that people or just a bit of information that people may not know about MS. But it's a disease of the central nervous system and it's one where your immune system actually attacks the nerve cells and it renders the patient unable to properly transmit information. So it causes imbalances. It can weaken your vision. It can cause fatigue and a lot of other unpredictable symptoms. And right now, there is no actual cure. There's a lot of effective treatment and they are looking for a cure. I know several people in the city who have MS. And actually, the first person I remember meeting who had MS was not, not in this city. It was someone I met when I was a teenager and she was pretty young and I didn't realize it. But apparently MS doesn't usually strike until you're in your thirties. So, so it's just something that can really get anyone at any time. So if you, you know, are so inclined, please go online, take a look and find someday this month to wear orange to bring awareness. And then finally, I want to thank everybody who has reached out to our fire family and to the Brosich family to offer support. At the funeral, I had the opportunity to talk with some of our retired firefighters really about how we can best honor our fallen hero. And it was just a really touching, it was a touching time. It was very emotional. But it was, heartwarming is what I want to say. But there were so many responders, not just from Madison Heights, but from the surrounding areas and the parking lot at the church was just full of fire trucks from all the different areas. And we had the honor flag there. There's, the ceremony, if it wasn't such a sad occasion, it would have been a beautiful ceremony. And I think it just really, it speaks to how much Captain Brosich and all our fighter, firefighters, all our first responders mean to our community, but just really how much he will be missed and just the impact that he had on those who knew him. And as has been said, our community really grieves this loss and our heart, my heart goes out to his wife and to his children. So may his memory be a blessing. That is it. Our next council meeting will be Monday, March twenty-second at seven thirty. The time is now eight thirty-eight. This meeting is adjourned. Good night.